Okay, please rise. The 20th regular session of the 20th City Council is now called to order. invocation by Honorable Counselor Yvona Yasini Manos singing of the Lupang Hinirang to Follow and the Kagaya di Oro March.
Good afternoon, everyone. To those who can make the sign of the cross, please do make the sign of the cross in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Dear God, thank you for today. Thank you for the safety and for allowing us to be here today. Thank you for making us mediums of service to our people and thank you for keeping us all healthy. Please guide us as we go through our session and our work today. May it be always for the greater glory. And this we ask through Christ our Lord. Amen. Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Mga kababayan, ang pampansang awit ng Pilipinas.
Please be seated.
Mr. Secretary, can you please do the roll call?
Honorable Joseline B. Rodriguez, City Vice Mayor and Presiding Officer for the First District Councilors: Honorable Agapito E. Roberto Giswan, Honorable Roger G. Abadai, Honorable J.R. Pasqual, Honorable Aimé Rose P. Moreno, Honorable Romeo V. Calizo, Honorable George S. Go King, Honorable Jose P. S. Abo Jr., Honorable Malvern E. Espasia, unofficial business. For the Second District Councilors: Honorable Yvona Yasini B. Imano, Honorable Maria Lourdes Gañi, Honorable Jalen Mercedes El Balaba, Honorable James K. Judith II, Honorable Ayan Mark Nakaya, Honorable Edgar S. Cabanlas, Honorable Christian Rustico M. Atchas, Honorable Jose G. Magtahas Daba. For the Second District, ah, for the ex-official members: Honorable Yan Lam S. Lim, Liga ng mga barangay President, and Honorable John Michael Seno, City SK Federation President. There is coram, Madam Presiding Officer.
Coram is recertified. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Our visitors, our media friends, Tagay Anons, Fellow Kagay Anons, councilors, good afternoon. Ah, before we proceed, let us sing a birthday song to Counselor Alam Lim to be led by Counselor Lourdes Gañi. Please rise.
May I request everybody, may kaapun ka na dun dun, may request everybody to please stand and please kantata kang para kang Counselor Alam Lim mula di mo makakagletson niya.
Okay, happy birthday to you. Let me sing.
Happy birthday to you, happy birthday to you, happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you.
Faster.
Happy birthday to you, happy birthday to you, happy birthday, happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Counselor Alam Lim. Okay, happy birthday. Thank you, Counselor Gañi. Majority Floor Leader, Counselor Ayan Mark Nakaya, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer, Vice Mayor Joseline Bebop Rodriguez. And good afternoon to our colleagues. Happy birthday, Counselor Yan Lam Lim. And our greetings to our friends from the media, Fellow Kagay Anons, Mayong Hapon. I move Madam Presiding Officer to dispense the reading of the minutes of meeting on November 21, 2022, and to consider the furnishing of its copy to every member as the reading itself.
And a second objection, I hear none motion is here by carried.
Likewise, for the approval of the said minutes of meeting.
Second objection, I hear none motion is here by carried.
We have four members. Madam Presiding Officer would like to render their special report and/or just point of information. First is Counselor Christian Rustico M. Atchas as regards his observations on certain fraudulent practice of several public market vendors in using defective weighing scales. Second is Counselor Jose P. S. Abo, who would like to render a report on the judicial fine for traffic violations. Third is Counselor John Michael Seno as regards his proposal to have a paperless transactions and whatever considerations by the council. Fourth is just point of information that Counselor Maria Lourdes Gañi would like to inform the City Council, Madam Presiding Officer. So, councilors Atchas, Abo, Seno, and Gañi.
Okay, Counselor Ayan Atchas, you are recognized.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, and members of the City Council, to the friends of media, people of Kagaya di Oro. Madam Chair, I would like to render a special report regarding the defects of the weighing scale in the public market. I received an information complaint from IndiMessenger, Madam Chair, regarding sa usakan mamalitay. Ng pag sulod niya sa merkado sa Puerto, alit siya o isakak kilo nga chicken, breast chicken, ang timbang is only 700 grams. So, nabuoan niya kay iyan kitimbang salain nga timbangan. So, iyan giuli, ang iyang gibalik niya kay kulang o timbang. And the other day, yesterday, Sunday, na malingke ko ay roam in the market, na observed gehapon ako maskin sa mga isda. Uban, kulang gehapon ang timbang. Then, Madam Chair, Christmas is soon, is fast approaching. So, I think it's time, Madam Chair, to conduct regular inspection in this period para ma-check nato kung dilib ba defective ang atong mga weighing scales sa atong kamerkaduhan. That's why I render this report, Madam Chair, para mahatagan o dakupod nga attention sa atong council. So, this is a very short, Madam Chair, that would be all. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Counselor Ayan Atchas. Please, Counselor Ayan Nakaya.
May we ask the Presiding Officer to direct our secretary to transcribe the report and be forwarded to the Task Force Calibracion, which is under the Office of the City Treasurer.
Okay. Mr. Secretary, please forward this information to the Task Force City Treasurer's Office. So, any comment? Any more comment? Sa timbangan, there should be a strict implementation to that para uniporme. Magdala kak kilo, Counselor J., timbangan. But there should be a random check of this timbangan, no, in fairness sa mamamalitay, no? So, any more comment? None? Okay, so our next, this is a very good report, Counselor Ayan Atchas. So, the next reporter is Counselor Attorney Joey Abu. Please, you recognize.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Sa atong halang dun nga Presiding Officer, Vice Mayor Joseline Bebop Rodriguez, sa akong mga kauban sa 20th City Council, mga igalan na to sa presya, mga bisita o mga galantao sa tuwas, sa social media, dawata akong mainitun pag bati sa isakamangayong hapon.
Merry Christmas.
Advance kayo. Kining akong special report na galangkob kalabot sa atong ginapatawang amulta sa traffic code sa Dakbayan for traffic violators in relation to Presidential Decree Number 969 as amended by Republic Act Number 10707, na ginatawag nato nga probation law. Unsa man kining probation law, matupas sa Korte Suprema. Ang probation is sa kaspecial na privilehiyo na ginahatag sa atong gobyerno nato sa mga mahinulusolon na nakalapas sa atong balao. It is a special privilege granted by the state to a penitent qualified offender. Kung ang isa ka tao mag avail sa probation o qualified siyang mag avail, instead nga iyang pagaserybisyohan ang iyang sentensya sa bilanguan, mamahimo siyang magpabili ng makabuhay gawa sa presuhan provided nga iyang sundun ang mga kondisyon nga ihatag sa parole and probation office. And once iyang ma comply na ang period of probation, ang effect ni Ana mawala o magpabili ang iyang record na limpyo na muras siyang wala nakalapas or nakasala sa balao. And mind you, that this privilege can only be availed once by any offender. In other words, kasara niya pwede magamit na privilehiyo. Kay kasara maninga privilehiyo magamit sa isa ka tao o ginahatag sa atong gobyerno. Dilitanan tao ang pwede makavail ni ini o maunin ang kita tao sa atong balao ang mga grounds na makapadisqualify sa isa ka nakalapas sa balao o ang isa ni Ana sa inyong makita sa inyong atubangan under Section 2 as amended by Republic Act 10707. Section 2, ah, not Section, ah, Section 9, OPD 969, Paragraph C: Those who have previously been convicted by a final judgment of an offense punished by imprisonment of more than six months and one day and/or a fine of more than 1,000 pesos. So, kung mahulog ka aning mga instances, you cannot anymore avail the privilege of probation. Sa atong traffic code, kung ang isa kamotorista nakasupak sa atong balao trapiko, pwede sang pagamultahan administratively sa kantidad nga 1,500, 3,000, o 5,000. Apan kung dilim ni mabayaran nga maong amulta sulod sa 72 hours sa inyong makita sa Section 209 sa atong traffic code. Kining iyang traffic violation, isakan niya sa Korte, i-file. O kasagara, sa akong experience ya, kung pag abot sa kaso sa Korte, dilin na niya ihearing, kasagara good, and most of the time, ang buhaton nalang is pagabayaran ang multa nga ginabutang sa atong traffic code nga 3,000. Una permi ang ginapataw sa Korte. So, hatulan siya sa Korte o judgment, no, fine of 3,000. Now, kung karoon kay kung dilim manato matagkan ang kapalaran sa isa ka tao, kung mangani makalapas siya subli sa atong balao, dilin na siya mamahimong makaavail sa privilege of probation kain naaman siya previous na judgment sa iyang traffic violation sa pagbayad sa kantidad nga 3,000. The offender will now lose the chance and opportunity to avail the privilege of probation because of his or her prior conviction with a penalty of more than 3,000 or kung sakalang sa Section 9 sa probation law, more than 1,000. Now, I have this experience as well. Na ako'y glinti, na nasa i traffic violation, of course, we settled to pay the fine of 3,000. However, namang sa kaso subli, which is under the jurisdiction of the municipal trial courts in cities. Pwede man ang ta, good may onta magprobation. But since there is a prior judgment from the court na nasa i traffic violation, na nikamo talang ginataon may hamusetel. Pero ano gun, that this privilege cannot be availed anymore just because for violation of traffic code. Now, to this, I humbly ask and seek the support of my colleagues in the City Council for us to pass a resolution urging the Philippine Congress through our district representatives to pass a law amending Section 9, Paragraph C of Presidential Decree 969, otherwise known as the probation law, and increase the amount of fine which makes an offender disqualified to avail the privilege of probation from more than 1,000 himuon siya to more than 5,000. Para biskiman o na ay hatol gikan sa Korte nga iyang pagabayaran nga fine nga 3,000, dilig gehapon siya mamahimong disqualified to avail the privilege of probation. So, ang kinidil lang ang mga katauhan dari sa atong Dakbayan sa Kagaya di Oro ang makabinipisyo ni Ana. Ganey, bisiksa lang dapit sa nasud, makabinipisyo niya kung man ganey, kining a probation sa maong balao, sa probation ma imindaran. O mamahimog iya bang kining makaavail sa maong probation, hilabina kung iyang nasupakan na balao, kalabot lang sa balao trapiko. Once again, a pleasant afternoon to everyone, and thank you very much.
Counselor Attorney Joey Abu, let me, if I may know, is this also has to do with the penalties on traffic violations, especially on condemnation? Are the cases still brought up to court in spite of this condemnation?
That is, ah, that is one of the questions I raised during that time, Madam Chair. How do we treat those offenders? Traffic offenders nga ang ilahang violation na sakalang sa Korte. I believe so, Madam Chair. Since the court has already acquired jurisdiction over the case, then it is within the discretion of the court whether to dismiss the case or allow them to just pay the fine of 3,000 or if they hope, proceed to trial.
Okay, so we can't do anything about it once it's brought up to court? Actually, this is not only a case of one person, but this involves several persons who can avail of this condemnation. Is there any other way that we can help, no? Kay dilim ang good fair sa ilangan na sakalang dito, and then we were able to, ano, katung uban, they were, what you call, given this condemnation, and there, these others who are already in court, wala gitay mahimo, Ana, to help them, no? Especially with the program of the mayor for now. Thank you. Majority Floor Leader, yes, Counselor Ayan Mark Nakaya.
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer. To my mind, it can be used by the legal council of the respondent violator to submit it to the court, the ordinance of the City Council which pardoned or condoned the violations that these traffic violators have committed. So, I guess, perhaps, the Presiding Judge would consider that's another issue that will be resolved in the court when it is brought, but to the understanding, it should be taken in the light of the wisdom of the City Council, which has given a pardon per se in acting the ordinance, Madam Presiding Officer. So, it can be utilized as a defense.
But is, I'm sorry, but the resolution can be used or not?
It's not necessary because we already have the ordinance.
Not necessarily because you already approved the condemnation?
Oh, diskarte na na sa abugado.
Ah, okay, and the court per se na gehandle na ng cases?
Oh.
Ah, okay, but then that can be the ground for the dismissal of the case, right?
Yes. If the judge will find wisdom on the ordinance that the council have provided cloth to those who have violated, I guess the judge will take cognizance of the condemnation.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, it's not the discretion of the court. So, you want to add that? Okay, Counselor Roger Abadai, please.
Thank you very much, Madam Presiding Officer. Vice Mayor Joseline Bebop Rodriguez, my colleagues in the City Council, and all our friends who are watching us this afternoon. Good afternoon. Ah, guapuning i propose ni Counselor Joey Abu, no? Kay kinalan na sa mga atong mga balao nun, criminal, civil, or sa atong rose of court, kinalan na sa di ma go over, ma review kay kining provision law of 1976. 1976 pa niya, OPD 968. So, na ay mga sections or provision na no longer applicable and is just already overtaken by time, especially karong panahon na, no? Kay one of the objective, mga kulang sa koyawan na ni, it will contravene to the objective of the provision law. Kay ang one of the objective of this law, the major goals of the government is to establish more enlightened and human correctional system that
Ah, okay, but then that can be the ground for their, ah, dismissal of the case, right?
Yes, ah, if the judge will find wisdom on the, ah, on the ordinance that the council have, ah, ah, provided cloth to those who have violated, I guess, ah, the judge will take cognizance of the, the condemnation.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, it's not the discretion of the court. So, ah, you want to add that? Ah, okay, Counselor Roger Abadai, please.
Thank you very much, ah, Madam Presiding Officer, Vice Mayor Jocelyn Bebop Rodriguez, my colleagues in the city council, and all our friends who are watching us this afternoon. Good afternoon. Ah, but, ah, guapuningi, ah, proposed ni Counselor, ah, Joey Abu, no? Kay, kinalan na sa mga ato mga balao dun, criminal, civil, or, ah, sa atong rose of court, kinalan na sa di ma go over, ma review kay, kining provision law of 1976, no? 1976 pani, OPD 96, Presidential Decree 968. So, ah, na ay mga, ah, sections or provision niya no longer applicable and is just already overtaken by time, especially karong panahon na, no? Kay, ah, one of the objective, mga kulang sangka kuyawanan eh, ang, it will contravene to the objective of the provision law. Kay, ang one of the objective of this law, ah, the major goals of the government is to establish more enlightened and human correctional system that will promote the reformation of offenders and thereby reduce the incidence of recidivism. Na ay daghan kay nato karoon mga drivers dun, naga dakpan, na nay mga warrant kay, na, subra nasdapulo ilang warrant to arrest, kay delete makabayad sa, di makabayad sa multa. So that's one of the reasons nga, ah, kwan opiro sigilang ya fog balik-balik, bisag, mula kung kakuyawon sabasin og gabusahan sa di sa atong mga, ah, ubang driver, no? Kay, ah, bagamay namang gayong guan, barato na kayo ang, ang fine, penalty. So that is one of the, ah, my anticipation, no? There might, it might be abused. Now, okay, sening marigio sa kinesya kay, beloka kung ang tao mapriso, dakuk ay ungas to sa gobyerno. Ghost, immediately, BGNP are being waged by the government, magbantay lang, na pay reformation program. So gili kaya maninga, ilik kay nga, kung may modigin mapriso ang tao, mapriso ka, madikunjes atong preso kay, gasto mo sa gobyerno. It's one of the essence of this law. So, and ah, na nga ang kongres ilaning i-go over sa hab kay, ah, para sa hab nga, ah, matagaan sa bukabur, kininga atong, kwan, labina sa hangyo ni, ah, Counselor Jupif's Abu. Thank you very much, Judge.
Thank you very much, ah, Counselor Roger Abadai. Yes, Counselor Attorney Joey Abu, please.
Thank you again, Madam Chair. Just to add up, um, ang kining sa atong traffic code regarding any mga recidivism, um, nakabutang din na is that if a kininga traffic violator or offender, kabalik-balik na siya, sige siya kab violate sa traffic code na'to, the only power we have sa LGU is to recommend to the Land Transportation Office for the cancellation of the driver's license. So ang kining lampod, ang tumong lampod ni ano siyang ikuwan sa masagingon ni Counselor Roger Abadai nga, it's more on reformatory manggun ni siyang probation onda. That's why it is defined by the Supreme Court as a special privilege to penitent, ah, penitent nga mga offenders. So instead na kay 3,000 man ang ato ang penalty sa court kung masaka siya sa kurte, ang niya sa balao na ingon is madisqualify ka if you are being imposed with a fine of more than 1,000. So delete na siya ka avail aning probation, ano gun gayo. So if we increase, if the law would increase the fine to be imposed nga delete siya madisqualify for probation to more than 5,000, which is the maximum penalty that the local government units can impose. So delete mawala ya pun nga privilege ang provision sa mga tao ya pun nga pwede mo avail.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Attorney Joey Abu. Yes, Counselor Edgar Cabanlas.
Ah, thank you very much, ah, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, good afternoon, members of the city council, our media friends, guests, may hapon. Ah, we've been practicing lawyers, ah, with Joey Abu and also the other lawyers here. And, ah, as experience, this is the clamor or the observation of lawyers and judges. Ngawala ma tagaib, kayo sa attention sa atong lokal nga panggobyerno. If you examine the traffic code and how it is being implemented, when there is failure of paying the administrative fine, you go to court. And when the court issues the decision that, ah, you have to pay the fine and the offender pays the fine, it becomes a criminal record. So you are now, you are, you have now a criminal record in the records of the FBI. So if you want to go to the FBI, then you have that criminal record. So it would affect your, ah, probability of being employed for a mere illegal parking or whatever, ah, kininga traffic violation. So, I agree with Counselor Abu that, ah, there is that amendment in the, in the, ah, probation law that could be asked from, ah, from Congress. But I think there is an easier way. There is a faster way to do that. We amend our ordinance, our traffic ordinance and put that as part of the ordinance, the provision, that all fines to be, to be, to be implemented or imposed by the court should be considered as administrative fine. By that, I do not know, that's why I think there should be a review on this and we will ask the opinion. By considering the fines paid by the offender upon the imposition of the court becomes an administrative fine, then there is no need for us to kawala may, kawala may criminal conviction, kawala may fine nga na bayan imposition na sa fine sa, na, na, na reduce ang criminal case into administrative proceedings. So muna nga, I talk with some judges then in city court, segatan auron na ninyo, kanang pwede mentingali nga kay luib kay ni mga drivers nga gamery ang impositionnya, tungod lang sa, ah, traffic violation na dunan nasilay criminal record. Suma brochila, maglissucil. So, kay kung ato paining atos kongreso meron lengan-lengan mo. Can we, Joey, can we, can we, I think we can, we can, we can meet on this? We decommities on, the committee on laws and rules, so that the, we can study this, nga atong subun lang katingali, nga tunggu dinansya. Oh, atong tanawon kung pwede ba ka nga, delete na attorney consider as a criminal imposition, but administrative fine, the imposition made by the court. That is follow.
Thank you very much, ah, Counselor Edgar Cabanlas. Yes, Counselor Attorney Joey, is that a possibility that we will, ah, refer to the committee on, ah, rules, laws and rules?
Yes, also, um, I think that's also a possibility, Madam Chair. But let me just make a comment, sir Ed, about it. Um, sa ato ang traffic code manggod, if, if we can, the better, kay mas dali isya, no? Madali isya. But, ah, I don't know, sir, kung, um, if we try to change the nature of the cases filed in court, kay kanang traffic violation na'to, it's a felony, precisely why the courts would issue warrant of arrest kung delete kabayan ang katong traffic violators, because it is criminal in nature. So kung atong i-change ang nature of imposition sa ang proceedings as administrative, basin wala jurisdiction po ang court to hear those cases?
This is a national law?
Yes, that's a national law. Although it would take time, yes. But if we can, if we can, why not? At the same time, Madam Chair, probably we can just, you know, issue this resolution and at the same time, study, study as well, what possible amendments can we make in our own traffic code?
Okay, so that's, that's good. Okay, thank you, Counselor Attorney Joey Abu. Yes, Counselor Edgar Cabanlas.
Ah, yes, ah, we, we cannot abandon the original proposal, Counselor Abu. Ah, I just, I just introduced this idea because I think this was discussed with, ah, with some, with judges in the city court. And, you know, in the proceedings of the city court, it's very fast. Bayad ka lang di so, ah, kaminkalang, away ka, away ka, so issue din ang court sa decision nga meron o kuwan, meron guilty. But if you can stop the proceedings at that point and have an amicable settlement between the offender and the, and, 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 and the government, then mabayad ka mangka, di bayaran nila ni, bayka to city hall, pagmakita ng recebo, it is business of court. So, ah, it could be, I don't know, but let us follow first the, ah, the suggestion of Counselor Abu. Kay, it's good, kay para nga mahimong nga model ang sitip kagen dioro by other cities later on. Ngamuna ang atong, ang ebuhaton. So, but, ah, ako, tong akong proposal, ato tongi sabit sa committee on laws and rules for, ah, legal, ah, atong tanawon, atong.
Thank you, Counselor Edgar Cabanlas. Yes? So let us, ah, at, ah, Counselor Attorney James Judith, please.
Sa atong halangdong B C Mayor, Jocelyn Bebop Rodriguez, sa atong mga tinahod mga kauban sa konsya, atong pinanggang katauhan sa dakbayan, i-sakpan sa prensa sa inyong tanan, maupay. Kini lang bali ang akong but paabot, kining, niuyon ko sa katong sugyot bali or komento ni Majority Floor Leader Ian Mark Nakaya. Og sa, sa kinatibukan ang but pa sa bot ang intention bali ni Counselor Abu. Pero nakita na ko sa paguyon na'to, pagdason na'to sa resolution, ang problema, kano sa baka matubag. Ya, sakto butong gingon ni Counselor Cabanlas nga naagit ang clamor, ang ugong bali sa katauhan, kabahin aninga problema nga nakita ni Counselor Abu. Ananilang pod, kamul, pwede menta nga magpagula ang resolution. Ah, taliwala sa tong gingon ni Majority Floor Leader Ian Nakaya. Ang ato lang inani, kamul ta pag, ah, kung naamangali tay idason nga resolution, ang akulang pod, para pod nga madugang bali o kanang, ah, ang kabugaton sa sugyot ni Counselor Abu. Kanina lang, naapod unta tay declaratory relief nga ifile, kay di mangta pwede nga, ato namgi unahan na nato ang problema nga wala pagitay ingon nga naay test case nga, moihinungdan, gigamit din to ang problema nga nabungat ni Counselor Abu. So ang ako inani, kung naamangali tay nakita, pwede ba siguro ta nga declaratory relief? Kay nakita ka baluman sa si Counselor Abu, si Counselor Cabanlas, nga delete menta pwede nga magbungat uga sa kabutang, ya ato na'to sa kurte kung wala pa bali tay ingon nga, kining problema. Kung naaman galing kabahin sa interpretasyon na'to sa usak balao, muna gitawag na'to declaratory relief. So nga akulang tabang lang pod sa katong, kung kinanlangin na'to mo sa karilusyon, uy, uh, kanang, usak ka resolution, kining uyon kita sa, sa pagdason sa maong resolution. Apan ang akulang para dugang lang pod, gravitas matupah. Moong nga, kining, naapod ta tay declaratory relief, kung naikaso si Counselor Abu nga yang gingon nga, naakuno siya klingting inana, then pwede ta nga magpasaka og declaratory relief, siya mismo magpasaka para madugangan bali ang katong gingon na'to nga resolution, ang katong yang gingon nga masulbat unta ni nato. Kay kung sa kongreso nga ato na resolution nga ipaagi na'to sa kongreso magulat ta kung kano sa pagitawon na nila nga matagaan og action. So kada lang, ang akulang is dugang lang sa katong gingon ni Counselor Abu nga naapod tay declaratory relief o katong gingon ni Counselor Cabanlas iagi sa laws and rules. Di nila, dagdag salamat.
Thank you, Counselor Attorney James Judith. For now, we will just refer to the committee on laws and rules and do, and, of course, the resolution read to congressman, no? For, ah, for Congress, but then for now, let us review, review the, the, if there's any amendment or just study the, the, ano, the, what you call this? The, the traffic code, so that, ah, from there, we will go from there, but then while waiting, no? We can still have this resolution. Para na lang sa tay mapaabot, just in case, okay? Wala ko kusabutan na declaratory.
Kay, para kinalanggit nga i-refer gidin na'to sa committee on laws and rules. Kina, na napokoy sugyot manungta nga dito ipadala sa kongreso, Majority Floor Leader nga, ang gahong manggod sa ato bali, kung maghimong manggod ta, kung magpatatao ka ng silot or multa, sa ato baling ordinance, sa taman na tao, singkumil, kung ako masayaw, Majority Floor Leader, singkumil, unya six, ah, 5,000 radayon, 5,000 nya six months dayon ang pinakataas nga, nga kining pagkabilanggo. So mula lang akong klarohon. So, a one year, a one year, unya dayon singkumil ang pinakataas nga, nga multa. So nagpadala na ko og kining, ah, sulat bali sa, sa kongreso, binagin ni Congressman Rupus Rodriguez, sumagpadala pod ko ni Congressman Luda Swann. Na kumay mo, taas-tasan palaparun bali ang atong gahong kay diarama takutob. So katunay, ihimplo lang daan katong kang konsya Nakaya, katong kabahin sa mga maginong bali sa tulay or pakani mga public, ah, publikong mga lugar. Delete na sa haum sa karoon nga panahon, ganay katawan na ta sa multa atong ipataog gikan kinintos, ang pinakadako mil kinintos. So panahon na pod siguro nga ato naning sugdan mo bitong i-refer na'to sa laws and rules. Kay para maapil podto, Madam Chair, ang katong sugyot nga palaparun ang atong gahong.
Okay, thank you very much, Counselor Attorney James Judith. So, ah, refer to the laws and rules, resolution to the congressman. From there, then you discuss sa levels of committee sa laws and rules, okay? So the next, ah, Counselor Romeo Caliso, you recognize?
No, then kuwan pa siya, napasya comment. Thank you very much, ah, Madam Chair, and good afternoon to all. The very purpose of penalties and the very purpose of the provisions of law is to instill discipline. Really, the law is harsh, but because we want to instill discipline to our constituents and the public. Sigurado gayod nga, ang mga penalties di yod ganahan sa mga offenders. But that is the law and the purpose of which is to instill really discipline, Madam Chair. That's why, ang atong RTA, once enforced, dagdag di ganahan. Kay, it's natural for humans. nga og, mula pasila sa balao, unya disiplinahon, mura, masakitang mangyod. That's why my point, Madam Chair, is that, ah, kining manggod na kanang, sa kadaghanan na'to mga terminologies nga gigamit, basi kunya, ang atong enforcement personnel, RTA and the police will become confused in enforcement, di na sila kasaboton sa ilang buhaton. So I suggest, Madam Chair, that, ah, while, ah, we recommend, ah, an amendment in the national, in the Congress, and as we brainstorm, ah, in the committee on laws and rules, let us simplify one that should be understood by our enforcement personnel and one that be understood by the public, Madam Chair. Kaya, sometimes sige taga, namatay la in line gud nga interpretation sa kada provision sa atong balao and that now cause, ah, the, ah, of course, the offender will always interpret the law to his advantage. Kay di masaganahan gud nga manubag, unase paglapas, Madam Chair. That's why, again, I strongly suggest that once we affect amendments, one that should be simple, one that should be easily understood both by the enforcement personnel and the public. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you very much, ah, Counselor Romeo Caliso. Any more comment? Okay, thank you. Let's proceed. The next, ah, that is, ah, no? Ah, okay, Counselor Michael Seno, you recognize?
Good afternoon, Madam Presiding Officer. Honorable Jocelyn Bebop Bautista Rodriguez.
Komplito na siya.
Of course, to the members of the 28th City Council, friends from the media, beloka gaya announce may hapon kanatong tanan. Obor na niya akong special report, Madam Presiding Officer. Obor agad. But, ah, this talks about the kanabang, ah, to adapt with the current situation. Kay, ah, sabtan ko, Madam Presiding Officer, as I observe in my office, kining atong agenda nga akong gigunitan karoon, medyo daghan na git kay ni. And I think we can do it, no? Kay, akong kakasabtan, more or less 100 pages each Counselor, plus the plastic. How many are we? Nineteen. Imagine the papers that was being used every Monday for one session. The cost of the government and the impact to our environment and the trees that being cut nga kasara na'to gamitin. I hope that this 28th City Council, with your leadership, with the members of the 28th City Council, we could have a, I think the, our agenda would be on Gmail already. So that, ah, I think in every office, we have an allocation for laptops, for computers. Maybe we could bring that one here and then scroll nalang ta sa ato ang mga agenda. And also, as an example, also to our barangay and even in the entire bureaucracy. In fact, uh, ang ato ang pagagamahanan sa Dakbayan, nanami ginatawag nila karoon, ob D D S. Ang mga invitations naanatanan sa internet, no? Automatic na, ob medyo pass pass sa tagamay, Madam Presiding Officer. And I hope that, uh, in the year 2023, delete na'ta magimprinta ob ato ang agenda, Madam Presiding Officer. Tanan na'to nga agenda, it will be on, uh, Gmail na isen, no? So naamag yapig isen, di na na'to imprinta, Madam Presiding Officer.
Okay.
And to pass a resolution also, to all 80 barangays in the city of Kagayan di Oro, to do the same. Urging them to do the same nga, kung mahimo, makaya, mapaperless napod ang ilahang pagmeetings. Sa barangay, sabtan ako, daghan pagkaayon, naghihapon sila mga papel. Imagine, pila ang ma-save sa guberno. And, uh, sa kungisulti, money and the environment na'to ang kakapektahanin. I hope, uh, uh, that's my only prayer, Madam Presiding Officer. One, to adapt here in the City Council by year 2023, paperless. And two, to urge our, uh, barangays na kung mahimo, magpaperless transaction. May hapon, Madam Presiding Officer.
Thank you very much, Counselor Michael Seno. That's a very good report, huh? Uh, very good observation. Pero, so tiyan, tamang ako, butang na'ko sa box and then, wala na. Unless, I try to retrieve, I do not do with you, because, uh, mat- makatoon napod ko, magdalag laptop. Di ba? So, any comment? Yes, Counselor J Pasqual?
Maayong hapon, Madam Chair, to my fellow colleagues. Actually, Madam Chair, nagpractice ko ani last year, I think nga, wala ko nagpa-deliver sa balay o akong agenda. Then tanan ng akong agenda, ipal-send lang na'ko sa email, then sa iPad na rin ako gabasaon, Madam Chair. So I think that was going on for one year. Up town ba ya? Grabisan. But, uh, nagpractice ko ano, Madam Chair, and I don't know kung okay ba sa kuwan. Pero I think, mura, naka, naka lesson ko sa hassle na ihatod pa sa balay, then naka kuwan pa. Yeah, I would, uh, kuwan, agree with Counselor Seno.
Yes, that is true, because you know why? Kanang burden sa ga-deliver and then they stay up late in the afternoon tungod magprint pa ani nga mga atong agenda. So this will lessen the workload, the lessen the delivery, no? Lessen paper, nga environment friendly ta? Production cost, so then I will learn how to do my laptop, I do not know to do the laptop, so everybody will be, uh, what you call it, digital literate, no?
Madam Chair, I suggest na, sa kanabitang budget na'to, nanagyud laptop or iPad nga. Nanagyud kini mo, iPad, Madam Chair.
Nanami na repress.
Paralitin namin magpa-print.
Di ba? Wala pa ba deka? Yes, Counselor Roger Abaday?
Okay, thank you very much, uh, Madam Chair. Uh, this is not, um, a statement of an old school, uh, but I adapt with the new technology that we, I think this is already proposed in the past, no? But, uh, Madam Chair, one of the advantages, disadvantages of this, disadvantages is, remember that this, uh, our agenda is a book of records, our reference in the future and at the time that we will need this one. Now, remember that, uh, all, uh, data from the, uh, ano, our laptop on our, on our cellphone, oh, there is a duration. So I think one month or how many days, may erase nisha, uh, it will be erased. So, the time that we need some references, kung walatay hard copy, then we have a hard time to, uh, trace or go over with those, uh, records that we have discussed. Remember, we have three years to have, uh, ano? So, uh, that this is one of the disadvantages.
Anyway, old school pa man siya, pariyarami. Uh, somehow, sige, I'll listen to another old school, Counselor Edgar Cabanlas.
Ako, approve ko na, nga i, ako, tigo lang naman ko, pero magtuunta.
Correct, correct. Yes.
The, the old should adapt with the new, not that the new will adapt with
Correct.
So, pero ako suggestion, para di pod magmae si Kegaw Roger. Kung gusto siya, daw, katung sipat niyang gusto, tegana'to ya.
Bitter. Those who wanted still di, ano, di hard copy.
You want see, you know, people sometimes, uh, uh, likes to read books, you know?
Yeah.
Our best mirror is, uh, book lover. Now, kay uban, mo pali kiglibro.
Correct.
Ako ban mo, basa din ni sa, kanang electronic, uh, book, e-books.
E-book.
Ako, ganan, nanami akong, sa balay, na akong, na akong electronic, pero mas ginahay ko basa na'tong
Libro.
Librogyud nga, imukay na naon ba? You feel the, 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 the pages, the paper, di print siya mo kunak. But I think, uh, in this proceeding, nga kinak ibri, ibribi kita na ay atong dakong igaston na'to. So, we have to adapt, uh, kinsa'tong gusto, sultilang to't para ma-deliveran, sa nanang papel. Pero katong delete na, para pecayapun tanan, pulus na lang tadi ni laptop.
Correct. Lugan-lugan kay balu, lugan ka. Lure, Counselor Edgar, kabalu beri kamu laptop. Ako ready dikabao. Anyway, yes, yes, those who wanted to have this hard copy, let him, let us give him also the hard copy. Kay basig mo igi, yang gusto, yang naanda, no? So, uh, when are you going to start? Next two years, huh? Next year? Yes, uh, Counselor Michael Seno?
Para magka, good afternoon, Madam Presiding Officer, para pod magka-prepare, siguro. Makadawatman o fifteen month, pay basin ma kuwan po ninyo, kapalit mo inyong laptop. Kay naman po'y budget, I think, sa office, para magka-prepare pod, o nangatuang Secretariat, magka-prepare pod. Oh, no, I think we could start it on, uh, January next year, 2023.
Okay.
Para na po'y time to prepare also, Madam Presiding Officer.
And our budget also, may January?
Yes.
Okay. Salamat sa iPad vice. Wait, aso na kuwan? Ah, sige. Pila ka po kinyung gusto. Okay, ato na storya na, kay di ko kay balu mainana. Ah, sige, sige. Ah, sige, sige, thank you, thank you. Okay, nagsabot na. Sabot na, huh? Litis ko no? Wag ikig bawa na ng litis, litis diya, Counselor Suset. Ako, delete day magpaperless, wala gi, yang laptop sa own man lugar. Di ba? Pero musukot, maputsa mo'y laptop. Yes, Counselor Romeo Caliso?
Thank you very much again, uh, Madam Chair. I have been once a in command of the A F P Command Center. So that was 2009, no? And, uh, on our tables, the laptops are already there and placed. Para delete bito daladalaon sa balay, niya gamitin sa uban, bitawang dulag, dulag M L, okan? Mas may na, nanagyud na dire.
Ah, diary.
Kay, yeah, at the Command Center, I, that's what they do. That was 20, 2010, yeah. Naka-install daan, di ba? Para di na bito daladalaon, yeah, maganay pa sa uban nga mga purposes. So, it is for official use only.
Ah, okay, so there's another kuwan, huh? There's another, uh, what you call, option? Option is to, after the session, it will be safe keep. Yeah, sa office of the, uh, secretary. Yes, Counselor Edgar Cabanlas?
Uh, the, the agendas are being delivered to us three days before. The purpose is for us to study.
Yeah.
But if we leave the laptops here, di lupa.
Lusopat?
So I think, uh, dali gano't sobra.
Say this, dah.
Para mo basa-basa na'to.
Dah, lusopat, comment?
Opus gua poto gung kuwan, no?
Baby, sapan man?
Ikaw gudak.
Okay na, any more comment? Wala na, okay, so January? iPad. Next year, iPad. So, I would like to ask Counselor Ja Abaday, na usapay yang una-una?
Actually, Madam Chair and my colleagues, so, I've been going over the email that has been sent to us by the Secretariat. But considering that we're also provided with the hard copy, then I utilize the hard copy.
To double limo?
I am, I'm to kuwan, I'm to review, uh, the two, raga email, oh. I have my own laptop, uh, issued by our City Council, oh. So I'm happy, were happy if you will provide us. I do want, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, Mandarin. I personal, di na pwede. Oh, yes, Counselor Aga Swann. Merry Christmas na magani.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I believe na we have different learning styles. Ako personally, I learn with a pen and paper on hand. So, as much as I agree with Counselors Seno, I am not against, I agree kuwan na. But make it a choice for a counselor, if he wants the hard copy, because I personally want the hard copy, much like reading a book. Although I read a lot of books, ganahan ko e-book, ganahan ko physical book, because I can more of, uh, ma- ma-feel na'ku ang words if I have, I turn the paper.
Correct.
Much like reading a book, it's like also having this agenda physically on my hands. So make it a choice, Madam Chair.
Correct, correct.
Gusto, hard copy, hard copy.
Alam po po, go ahead, same way with you, I like this hard copy.
So, that again, Madam Chair, just to support our different learning styles.
Yeah, 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 okay, okay. We can still put those for those who wanted the hard copy, okay? So manaha, manang dibate. Anyway, uh, the next, uh, the next, uh, Counselor is ah, Counselor Lourdes Gaaney, you recognize?
Thank you, Madam Chair. May hapon ka na atong tanan, this is for information only. A few weeks ago, the 28th City Council passed a resolution changing the name of the Health and Health Insurance Committee to include the word nutrition. This was in deference to the City Nutrition Committee's request. When asked why, Ms. Nanette Rabe, the Winsam City Nutrition Action Officer replied that it was the suggestion of officers from the National Nutrition Council. The idea was that the City Nutrition Committee would have better chances of winning regional or national nutrition awards by doing so. It appears, my dear Kagayan Annons, that the change really work wonders for our City Nutrition Committee. Today, I am pleased to announce that the City Nutrition Committee won three major regional nutrition awards last Friday from the National Nutrition Council. First is the Regional Nutri Webby Award. This is given to local nutrition committees website with highest likes, highest unique posts, highest number of articles submitted and highest number of post engagements. The Nutri Webby Award thus recognizes local nutrition committees in Region 10 with highly visible and exemplary initiatives in promoting good nutrition for positive behavior change through posting of relevant contents in the social media. Second is the Circle of Excellence Award Hall of Fame. This award is given to L G U's with decreasing trend on prevalence of stunting from 2020 to 2022. The World Health Organization defines stunting as the impaired growth and development children experienced from poor nutrition, repeated infection and inadequate psychosocial stimulation. The National Nutrition Council says that one in every three Filipino preschools children is stunted. The global ratio is one out of every five. And while many will say that Filipinos are short genetically, it can be prevented. Our City Nutrition Council is thus exerting best efforts to produce taller children for the next generation, so that we may yet be a basketball superpower in Asia. The third is the Special Citation, Second Year Consistent Regional Outstanding Winner in Nutrition or the Crown Award. This award is given in recognition of the city's effective and efficient implementation of nutrition programs especially among children. It also commends the city for maintaining an outstanding and consistent implementation of its nutrition action plan. Kagayan di Oro City is the sole recipient from Northern Mindanao. It also entitles the City Nutrition Committee to compete for the Nutrition Honor Award, the highest National Nutrition Council Award given to L G U's with outstanding performance. As Chair of the Health Committee for three successive City Councils, I can attest to the efforts exerted by our C N C to live up to its mandate. The City Nutrition Committee, under the leadership of Mayor Orlando Clerex Uy, is committed to sustaining effective and efficient nutrition program management through active collaboration among stakeholders. This will hopefully lead to nutritionally productive and healthy Kagayan Annons. The City Nutrition Committee also recognizes integrating comprehensive nutrition education to manage overweight and obesity, promote a healthy lifestyle and prevent chronic communicable diseases to the wider public. It has employed several strategies for an aggressive healthy lifestyle and nutrition promotion. This includes posting of holding ten Kumain Mens and Pingang Pinoy forums among parents and caregivers of preschool and school age children and adolescents. It is also conducting healthy lifestyle lecture among elementary and high school students, B N S, non-government organizations and government agencies and workplaces among persons with deprived, deprived of liberty, senior citizens and patients with diabetes. I therefore strongly recommend, on behalf of the tireless men and women of the City Nutrition Council, under the able stewardship of Ms. Nanette Rabe, that this August body pass a resolution commending the C N C for a job well done. It might not be much, considering the time and effort our nutrition team has expended through the years, but it would go a long way towards giving recognition where it is long overdue. You also have to thank our City Health Office led by Dr. Rachel Delia for its support in promoting the nutrition and health well-being of our citizens. Without its guidance and support, the C N C would not have succeeded in its mandate. This again proves that teamwork and coordination would produce results in government. Let me end by recalling this year's Nutrition Month slogan. New normal na nutrition, sama-sama ang gawan ng solution. It is important to focus on this battle cry for a strength in nutrition intervention as the country shifts towards coexisting with the Corona COVID-19 virus. Indeed, the pandemic paralyzed the world and changed our perception of daily living, thereby disrupting nutrition programs and projects. The slogan challenges decision makers to ensure that nutrition is part of the development agenda in the near future. It therefore highlights the key role of nutrition in building resilience from pandami, from pandemic to endemic paradigm. We in the 28th City Council can do no less but rise to this challenge. As the tourism goes, a healthy country is a progressive country. Salamat, eh, may hapon. Salamat, mayang hapon.
Thank you very much, Councilor Lordes Gaani. Congratulations, no? To the city, congratulations to you, and of course to the City Nutrition Committee and City Health, right? So, a resolution? Congratulating, Mr. Secretary? Okay. Councilor Ian Mark Nakaya, please?
At the proper time? Resolutions? We now proceed to the agenda proper, Madam Presiding Officer. First and second items for omnibus motion. One is proposed Resolution Number 2022-174, Returning to the barangay council of barangay number 5, the city, its ordinance number 2022-11-2, series of 2022, and two, proposed Resolution Number 2022-175, Returning to barangay council of barangay number 16, the city, its ordinance number 2-2022, covering its respective supplemental budget number 1 for calendar year 2022 with estimated incomes, with information that said ordinances are operative in their entirety. May we ask the Chair?
Councilor, uh...
Councilor Roger Abada.
(laughing) Okay. I thought Councilor Michael Seno. Okay, Councilor Roger Abada, you recognize?
Thank you very much, Majority Floor. Considering that the Agenda Number 2, Resolutions Number 2022-174, and this proposed Resolution 20, Number 2022-175, is in order, I move for the approval.
And a second objection? I hear none. Motion is here by carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Second objection? I hear none. Motion is here by carried.
Number three is proposed Resolution Number 2022-176, Accrediting the Northern Mindanao Holistic Therapeutic Blind Matures Service Cooperative for purposes of its membership in the local special bodies pursuant to the ILG Memorandum Circular Number 2022-083 and Article 64 Rule 13 of the Rules and Regulations Implementing the 1991 Local Government Code or funding its project from the city or other sources as required under the COA Circular Pertinent There To. Move for its approval, Madam Presiding Officer.
And a second objection? I hear none. Motion is here by carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Second objection? I hear none. Motion is here by carried.
Number four is proposed Resolution Number 2022-177, Accrediting the Borgos Macahambos Livelihood Association, Inc., for purposes of its membership in the local special bodies pursuant to the ILG Memorandum Circular Number 2022-083 and Article 64 Rule 13 of the Rules and Regulations and implementing the 1991 Local Government Code or funding its project from the city or other sources as required under the COA Circular Pertinent There To. Again, for the approval of this said resolution, Madam Presiding Officer.
Second, any objection? I hear none. Motion is here by carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Second objection? I hear none. Motion is here by carried.
Number five is proposed Resolution Number 2022-178, Endorsing and/or interposing no objection to the operation of the Grab Services, a transport network vehicle service in the city of Cagayan Dioro as applied for by Mr. Kurt Sindana, Public Affairs Manager, Mindanao Grab Philippines, subject to existing laws, rules, and regulations pertinent there to. May I ask the Chair to recognize Councilor Romeo Caliso?
Councilor Romeo Caliso, you recognize?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Having complied with all the requirements, I move for the approval of this said resolution.
And second objection? I hear none. Motion is here by carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Second objection? I hear none. Motion is here by carried.
We have for inclusion as items 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, and we have from Councilor Joey Abo, 15, and 16, 17, the suspension of the session as requested by Councilor James Judith. Ah, okay. 18A, B, and the 19 is the suspension. Okay. Move for their... There is also one? No, it's already included. Uh, up to 19, up to 19, Madam Presiding Officer, for their inclusion.
Any second objection? I hear none. Motion is here by carried.
Muni ang kulang para sa bonus, sir. Muni ang number 6. Proposed Ordinance Number 2022-77, Approving the Supplemental Budget Number 4 of the General Fund and the Special Account Local Economic Enterprises Utilities for both calendar year 2022 with estimated incomes of 98,979,129 pesos and 8,470,000 pesos, respectively against estimated expenditures of the said amounts. May we ask the Chair to recognize Councilor Yan Lam Lim?
Councilor Yan Lam Lim, you are recognized. Second, oh, not yet. Hala pa. Isan nung gawin, second?
Madam Chair, everything is in order. I move to approve. Proposed Resolution Number 2022-77.
Any second objection? I hear none. Motion is here by carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Second objection? I hear none. Motion is here by carried.
Seven is proposed Resolution Number 2022-179, Designating Disrepresentation, City Councilor of Cagayan Dioro Philippines as Ambassador of Goodwill to Canada on the occasion of his travel there to to attend the summit for sub-national governments and cities and so on and so forth. May I ask the Chair to recognize Councilor Romeo Caliso?
Councilor Romeo Caliso. Oyohaya, uban me.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
(inaudible) (laughing)
Councilor Romeo Caliso.
By the power vested in me as the Assistant Majority Floor Leader, I move for the approval of this said resolution, Madam Chair.
Any second?
Subject to pasalubong.
Objection?
(inaudible)
Subject for?
Pasalubong.
Pasalubong?
Mura gi, gi subgani, Councilor Cabanlas?
(inaudible)
Pangnosnos, bana?
(laughing) Anyway, asan ako? Objection? I hear none. Motion is here by carried.
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer, and our colleagues.
Oyohaya.
Move to approve second final reading.
Second, any objection?
As motion again by Councilor Caliso.
An objection?
Mr. Secretary, can we put in record?
Objection again? Subject styling?
(inaudible)
Anyway, I hear none. Motion is here by carried. Oyohaya nila, uy. Ikaw man sunod.
Bugat kini ng chocolate. Bugat.
Anyway, thank you again. And number eight is proposed Resolution Number 2022-180, Designating Honorable Earl King Cadis Lim, punong barangay barangay number 9, Cagayan Dioro City, Philippines, as Ambassador of Goodwill to Rome, Italy.
Yan ako man ipropose.
Rome, Italy, yeah. On the occasion of his travel there to, on December 3 to 14, 2022, as guest speaker for the Leadership Training and Seminar for the International Migrant School in support of the children of the overseas Filipino workers in Italy, and authorizing him on official time to observe modern trends of local government programs and projects there at, and highly appreciating whatever assistance and courtesy extended to him with respect to and in furtherance of his trip or mission under this resolution. Proponent, Councilor, our City Vice Mayor?
Oyohaya na sa'bo?
Move for its approval, Madam Presiding Officer.
Second objection? Pangitamo, manglar gamo ko.
Napay next week.
Napay next week.
Napay next week.
And?
Napay usan, napay usan.
Napay, napay mula, plakana mo?
Dua, dua, dua.
Adua?
Yan Lam Lim and...
Oyohaya niyo ba?
United Nations, nimo?
United? (laughing) Anyway, any objection? I hear none. Motion is here by carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Second objection? I hear none. Motion is here by carried.
Number nine is proposed Resolution Number 2022-181, Electing Disrepresentation, Councilor Malvern A Sparcia as additional members of the Committee on Cooperatives, Amending for the purpose Resolution Number 1420-2022, or otherwise known as the 20th City Council Committee Composition. May I ask the Chair to recognize Councilor Aimi Rospi Moreno?
Councilor Aimi Moreno, you recognize?
Thank you, Majority and Vice Mayor, mayang hapon sa tanan. Everything is in order, and I move to approve Resolution Number 2022-181.
Any second objection? Inquiry? Okay, the Councilor Attorney James Judith?
Madam Chair, gusto lang ako malamdagan, kaya nabutang madini-electing Councilor Ian Mark Nakaya. But lang ko malamdagan, diba dili na kinalan ni Lex si Councilor Nakaya, kay Majority Floor Leader? Ex-officio, mangka sa tanan nga, standing committees? So, muna ko nung ikla.
The committee would like me to render the service as a regular member.
Ah, not in your ex? Ah, okay. Pwede din na siya?
Even the Vice Mayor, she can be elected to, to, to the committee chairmanship, vice, and membership.
So pwede siya ma-member?
So I could also be elevated as a regular member, rather than as ex-officio member?
(inaudible)
Ah, nagiklaro lang ako sa kalamdagan sa tanan. So pwede din, kiti nga lang kung ano ilip mong god nga, naano mong god si Councilor Nakaya? So it is ano?
As my counterpart, diba Majority Floor Leader, ako, my Majority Floor Leader, as members, ex-officio sa tanan standing committees? So that's why, gubot na ko malamdagan, maod ika para as regular member.
Ah, okay. Regular member, so can vote?
The Vice Mayor can also be elected.
Can vote, right?
Di, naado ikalainan Majority Floor Leader sa, sa ex-officio o sa regular member?
Spelling? Second is, uh...
Sa title?
The title is, uh, ex-officio is by virtue of deposition. In other words, uh, he, he can practice, or he maybe cannot, but without necessarily attached with the obligation of a member, of a regular member.
Voting, right, is still the same with, with the ex-officio and the regular member?
Actually, we did not provide in the rules our right to vote
Ah, okay.
as ex-officio member.
Ah, okay. So just participate?
Right, Mr. Secretary? We do, we did not provide.
Consider it silent, so it's still the same? There's no distinction with the ex-officio and the regular member?
That's the distinction, the right to vote.
So the ex-officio cannot vote?
Under the rules, I, I could not recall that we have provided.
Wala.
We have not.
So with your name there in the committee, you can vote?
Yes.
Because you were recognized?
Yes.
As member?
Yes.
Ah, in the counting of votes, you are part of the... Okay, so there's a difference now. Okay, thank you very much.
But, uh, may we ask our secretary to verify? That's my recollection. As, wala ba? Ah, correct. But that is not an objection?
Inquiry?
Okay, thank you. The answer to that is, you asked Councilor Moreno.
(laughing)
Anyway.
Anyways?
Let's proceed, Madam Presiding Officer.
Okay, proceed.
For the consideration.
Actually, I'm also enlightened, because you know what? I do not know. With ex-officio, you cannot vote. But then, now I know that if you are assigned to a committee, or you will be a member of the committee, then you can vote.
Yes.
Am I right?
Yes.
Okay, so there's a difference now, Attorney James Judith?
The unwritten tradition, Madam Presiding Officer, or culture of this council is that any member can participate in the discussion. In other words, even if you are not a member appointed or designated as regular ex-officio, you can participate, because this is public.
But you cannot vote.
But you cannot vote when it comes to voting.
Voting. So that's the difference now with the ex-officio, and you are not a member, you cannot vote, but if you are a member, you can vote. So that is what I understand.
Further to that, Madam Presiding Officer, we have already advised our City Secretary. Uh, if you are not a member of the committee, and you have participated, and you would like to be included as one of the movements of the proposed measure, you just sign below the, the, the names of all the members. Uh, I, I guess the secretary has taken cognizance of that proposal already.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much. Let's proceed.
For the consideration for the approval, Madam Presiding Officer.
Okay, second, an objection? I hear none. Motion is here by carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Second objection? I hear none. Motion is here by carried.
Number 10 is proposed Ordinance Number 2022-78, Amending Section 2D of Ordinance Number 14385-2022, otherwise known as the Tax Relief Ordinance of 2022, so as to grant condemnation of all our year surcharges, interest, and penalties of delinquent stolen rentals in all public markets and terminals for the year 2021 and prior years, provided that the stolen rentals for the year 2022 shall be paid in full within six months from the effectiveness of this ordinance and for other purposes. Move for its approval, Madam Presiding Officer.
And a second objection? I hear none. Motion is here by carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Second objection? I hear none. Motion is here by carried. Let me clarify, Councilor Ian Mark, so six months from the effectiveness today?
Yes. No, from the signing of the ordinance.
So, six months rang effectiveness, other than that?
Uh, if you cannot apply, and if you cannot comply with the obligation to pay the 2022 rental and, and all, Madam Presiding Officer, you're not qualified to be benefited of this ordinance on the condemnation.
Yeah, okay.
So we have given them time, six months.
Okay.
(inaudible).
Okay. Who's it is?
For the approval, second final reading, umana ba?
Second?
Move for the second final approval.
An objection? I hear none. Motion is here by carried.
11 is proposed Resolution Number 2022-182, Returning to barangay council of barangay number 22, the city, its ordinance number 2-S-2022, series of 2022, covering its supplemental budget number 1 for calendar year 2022 with an estimated income of 981,925 pesos, with information that said ordinance is operative in its entirety. May I ask the Chair to recognize Councilor Jan Michael Seno?
Councilor Jan Michael Seno, you are recognized? Hey, sorry.
I assume move Resolution Number 2022-182, Madam Presiding Officer.
Second? An objection? I hear none. Motion is here by carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Second objection? I hear none. Motion is here by carried.
Number 12 is proposed Resolution Number 2022-183, Returning to the barangay council of barangay number 40, the city, Its Ordinance Number 1-2022, series of 2022, covering its annual budget for calendar year 2023 with an estimated income of 3,235,481 pesos, with the information that said ordinance is operative in its entirety. May I ask the Chair to recognize the birthday boy, Councilor Yan Lam Lim?
Birthday boy, Councilor Yan Lam Lim?
I assume move, uh, proposed Resolution Number 2022-183.
Second, any objection? I hear none. Motion is here by carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Second objection? I hear none. Motion is here by carried.
Number 13 is proposed Ordinance Number 2022-79, Authorizing the Honorable City Mayor Rolando Auy to enter into and sign the Memorandum of Understanding MOU with the Smart Communications, Inc., and the City Scholars of Cagayan Dioro, covering the sponsorship of 345 pieces of smart bro pocket Wi-Fi donation to the City Scholars under the terms and conditions stipulated therein. May I ask the Chair to recognize Councilor Suzette Magta?
Councilor Suzette Daba, you recognize?
Madam Chair, I move to, I move to approve, uh, proposed Ordinance Number 2022-79.
Any second? Objection? I hear none. Motion is here by carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Second objection? I hear none. Motion is here by carried. I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Number fourteen is proposed resolution number 2022-184, returning to the barangay council of barangay number forty, the city, its ordinance number two, series of 2022, of covering its supplemental budget number one for calendar year 2022 with an estimated income of 968,352 pesos with information that said ordinance is operative in its entirety. Again, for the recognition of Counselor Yan Lam Lim.
Counselor Yan Lam Lim, you recognize?
Madam Chair, I so move, uh, proposed resolution number 2022-184.
Second? Objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Second? Objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Number fifteen is proposed resolution number 2022-185, expressing the 20th City Council's deepest sorrow for the untimely demise of Attorney Manuel Maning Ar Ravanera, and conveying most profound sympathy and condolences to the very family, proponents, all members. Move for its approval, Madam Presiding Officer.
Second? An objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Second? Objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Number sixteen is proposed resolution number 2022-186, the earnestly requesting Honorable Congressman Lordan Giswan, First District, and Honorable Congressman Rufus B. Rodriguez, Second District, both the city, to file a bill in Congress for the further amendment of Presidential Decree Number 968, otherwise known as the Provision Law of 1976, as amended by Republic Act Number 10707, particularly Section 9C thereof, as to increase the penalty of offenders who are disqualified to avail of the benefits of the said decree from a fine of more than 1,000 pesos to a fine of more than 5,000 pesos. For the recognition of Counselor Jose Pepe S. Abu Jr., Madam Presiding Officer.
Counselor Attorney James, Attorney Joey Abu, you recognize?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move for the approval of proposed Resolution Number 2022-186.
Any second? Objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Second? Objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Number sixteen, seventeen is proposed resolution number 2022-187, urging the eighty barangay councils of barangay councils and the Sanggunian Kabatahan of Cagayan de Oro City to go paperless or electric form, galihok man, in the conduct of the sessions and committee hearings, subject to styling. Again, for the recognition of Counselor Jan Michael Sano.
Counselor Michael, Counselor Jan Michael Sano, you recognize?
Madam Presiding Officer, I so move the proposed Resolution Number 2022-187, subject to styling.
Any second? Objection? I hear none, motion is hereby? Objection? Okay, Counselor Roger Abada?
I, I thought the special reporter is reporting about the body of Sanggunian Panglonsod to be paperless, and now is eighty barangay, is it included in his special report, Madam Chair? This is for clarification.
Answer, please. Okay, Counselor Jan Michael Sano?
Morag, moragwa galing na kapaminaw siguro at. Kaya nag scroll pa siguro si Angkwan babasahon. But I think I have said it, there are two prayers. One is to practice here, to be an example to those eighty barangays that we go paperless.
Personal, kwanan nila, let's not consider the discussion actually. Kwanan, ganina pa nabuntang sila.
Ah, di ba?
Unan ang topic. Unan ang topic. It's cannot be revealed publicly.
Ah, okay, okay. Sige lang, ipanayun lang sila gapon.
Anyway. Jokingly aside, Madam Presiding Officer, depending motion is for the approval.
Okay, any second? Any objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried. Excuse me, how about this committee on referring to the laws and rules with the Counselor Attorney Joey Abu?
Yes.
Is that included?
That was already taken by the secretary.
Ah, primero, ako diw kita? Ah, okay, sige, sige, okay. Okay, proceed.
Eighteen A and B, A is proposed Resolution Number 2022-188, commending and congratulating the City Nutrition Committee led by Ms. Nanette Rabi for winning three major regional nutrition awards from the National Nutrition Council, subject to styling. B, proposed Resolution Number 2022-189, expressing gratitude and commendation to the City Health Department led by Dr. Rachel D. Dilia, City Health Officer, for its unequivocal support in promoting the nutrition and health well-being of the residents of Cagayan de Oro, subject to styling. May we ask the Chair to recognize Counselor Maria Lordes Gahani.
Counselor Lordes Gahani, you recognize?
Madam Chair, I move for the approval of proposed Resolution Number 2022-188, subject to styling.
Any second? Objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Oh, apila, apila.
188 and 189.
Second?
Second? Objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Number nineteen is proposed Resolution Number 2022-190, suspending the regular sessions for December after January, after December 5th, and in deference to the observance of the Yuletide season and New Year, the styling should be according to what I have articulated. Proponents, all members. Move for its approval, Madam Presiding Officer.
Any second? Objection? Objection? Wala g'da, klaro ha? Claro, okay. I hear none, motion is hereby carried. Merry Christmas na.
But the subject to styling is, uh?
Yeah.
We can convene on a special session.
Special, kunay emergency, no?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
So, the public is notified that although there is a suspension, uh?
Still.
That, but still, we are open for, uh? Holding special session.
Okay.
Okay, and move to approve second final reading.
Second? Objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Morana, first?
Wala na?
Bagak lugar next week.
Uh, next week, morag, padong tahan na alis unsis kabe eh. Bagak magu kayo.
Move to adjourn, Madam Presiding Officer.
Anyway, thank you very much, uh, session adjourned. Happy trip na.